Good evening. At this time, I'm going to recognize Pastor Janice Carroll to give our invocation. You can remain seated. Thank you.
Good evening. Let us pray. Most holy and wise God, we come before you tonight to thank you, oh Lord, that you have gathered us here together once again. For, Lord, the things that concern this community in this county, under the leadership of those that have been chosen to lead us, God, we will know that we cannot do anything without you. So we ask you now, as we have gathered together, that your presence be felt as we make decisions that's going to be in the best interest of all the citizens that dwell here. But, Lord, that is not an easy job, so we pray for them. We ask for the strength and the courage to make the decisions in the coming days and the time that we have ahead of us, for the benefit of the citizens that live here, that they too will know that their lives are in good hands of the people that have been chosen to lead. But, God, as we stand under those words and God we trust, let us know that as we do that, we can be assured that whatever our decisions, if it's done in your trust, then we can be assured that everything is going to be all right, as we desire to work together and be at peace with one another. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Carroll. This time, I'll call the November Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'll ask that you stand as we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and that'll be led by Commissioner Randy Walker.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask that you please turn your cellphone off or at least put it on silent mode. Does any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed? Okay. See none. We'll move to item D, the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
And a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Items for presentation. The first one is the service awards presentation. Delores.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have two employees that I'd like to acknowledge tonight for their service to Beaufort County. They are not here to receive their awards, but we have Melissa Tripp with the Department of Social Services, and she now has 10 years of service. And we have Latoya Young with the Department of Social Services, who has five years of service now with the department.
Thank you very much, Delores, and please express our words of appreciation. The next item is the Veterans Day Resolution. Brian Allagood.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Board. Item on page five of your agenda, this is the Veterans Day Resolution. As you well know, Veterans Day is November the 11th. You have a resolution honoring and thanking all veterans for their service. You have representatives from multiple veterans organizations here tonight. Mr. Dan Edwards with the American Legion Post 15 Commander, Jeffrey Higerton, American Legion Post 263 Commander, John Easterling, Disabled American Veterans DAV Post 48, Mr. Jerry Townsend, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 6088, Betsy Lee Hodges, President of the Auxiliary Unit 15, and Helen Guthrie, President of Auxiliary Unit 263. As part of the resolution also, the Communications Director has put together a video recognizing veterans who worked for Beaufort County, and you have the recommendation to adopt the attached resolution honoring and thanking all veterans for their service. If you would like, we would certainly read that into the record. So, Resolution 2023-11-06-01, honoring veterans for their service. Whereas World War I, known at the time as the Great War, officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June 28, 1919. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier when an armistice between allied nations and Germany went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And for that reason, November the 11th, 1918, is generally regarded as the end of the war to end all wars. And whereas, on November 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November the 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day. And on May 13, 1938, Congress approved an act officially designating the 11th of November of each year a legal holiday, a day to be dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be thereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day. And whereas, on June 1, 1954, at the urging of veteran service organizations, Congress passed legislation that amended the Act of 1938 by striking out the word "armistice" and inserting in its place the word "veterans." And with approval of this legislation, November the 11th became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. And whereas, 7.2% of Beaufort County residents are military veterans, ranking Beaufort County 30th out of all 100 North Carolina counties in veteran population density. And whereas Veterans Day gives all Americans a special opportunity to pay tribute to all those men and women who throughout our history have left their homes and loved ones to serve our country. And whereas, in every generation, Americans veterans have been willing to give all for that which we hold sacred: freedom, justice, and democracy. And they have served selfishly, sacrificed greatly, and shouldered the burden of freedom quietly, asking no glory for themselves. And whereas, for the love of country and dedication to duty, Americans veterans have endured adversity, loneliness, fatigue, loss, and made other incredible sacrifices, with many sustaining, altering physical injuries and disabilities, while others bear the burden of emotional scars for the remainder of their lives. And whereas, as a country and as individuals, we enjoy the privileges of peace, prosperity, and freedom because of our veterans, and we are forever indebted to them beyond measure. And whereas Beaufort County appreciates the service and sacrifices of our veterans and believes special recognition should be granted, now therefore be it resolved that in honor of Veterans Day, Beaufort County asks all citizens to turn their hearts and thoughts to all our nation's veterans and reflect on the great achievements of those whose sacrifices preserve our freedom and our way of life. And with a spirit of pride and gratitude, celebrate their heroic accomplishments and thank them for their unselfish devotion to duty, for they are indeed worthy of this solemn tribute. Adopted this the sixth day of November 2023.
Thank you. This time, I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Motion.
Second. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you. This time, we have a video. Brandon's going to be coming out. While he's coming out, could I ask all the veterans that are here tonight to stand, if possible, so you can be recognized? That's a good group. Thank you for your service.
Just want to take an opportunity to thank all the veterans who participated in this video and thank all the veterans who worked throughout our county government for serving the country. Yes, we hear it, we say it, you know, freedom is not free, and we relate that to our military service members. We relate that to how we watch the atmospherics around the world. But I let you know today that veterans should be recognized and should be appreciated only because of where we're at and where we come from. They don't want anything other than the respect of what service they did give because they volunteered for that service. So every uniformed soldier, Marine, Air Force, sailor, all the services, these are our America. That is who America is. We're volunteers. We want to give, and we want to provide that security for our nation.
Beaufort County is illuminating county buildings green from November 6 through 12 as part of Operation Green Light for Veterans, a nationwide effort uniting counties to support military veterans. It's an opportunity to raise awareness of the resources available to veterans and their families. The Beaufort County Veterans Services Office serves approximately 3,500 veterans, and you'll find many veterans within the Beaufort County government workforce.
Hi, I'm Sue Squires with Beaufort County Economic Development. Originally from Wisconsin, I moved to Beaufort County about nine and a half years ago, and I've been with Economic Development two years, a little over two years. I was in the Air Force and active duty approximately seven years. I signed up in October 1980. I left for basic training in February 1981, very cold day in Wisconsin. I served active duty till November 87, but I continued to work as a DOD civilian for the Air Force until 1993. I worked in computer ops, telecommunications. What we did is we gathered, received, and sent encrypted intelligence from Berlin to the zone. I think it's serving something better and bigger than yourself, seeing beyond the white picket fence that I grew up with, and being exposed to different cultures and making a difference. You know, you may not think about it at the time, but what you're doing is important to your nation's security, and even small, everyone, I think, plays a part in that.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Seaman. I am from Fort Wayne, Indiana. I came down to serve through the military. Last duty station was Fort Bragg, and now I'm a reservist. I've been in for 26 years, and my current role is a first sergeant for a drill sergeant company that will go down to Fort Jackson and train new recruits. After high school, I just wanted to serve my country and get that discipline and see the world. So I used to jump out of planes, and I got to jump in the Alps with the Italians. And when I came out of the airplane, it was a ski resort. People were skiing, and I was kind of drifting to a ski lift, and I landed right next to it. It was the softest landing ever because of the snow, and I got my Italian wings from it, and that was my best memory.
I'm very excited to know our county has brought this to the surface and is willing to talk to our veterans and give them opportunity, because I really tell you, that really means a great deal to our veterans. One, it just feels good to know we did something in a collective, structured way that makes our America great.
And once again, once again, we do thank each one of you that are here tonight and all of our employees that are veterans, that have made our country as great as it is and is safe, and we continue to depend on people just like yourself. So, once again, thank you for everything that you did for our country. Brian, Operation Green Light.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Board. This is the second year of Operation Green Light for veterans, and the county is again participating in this effort by shining green lights to recognize veterans who are transitioning back into civilian life. The attached resolution recognizes November 6 through November 12 as the observation of Operation Green Light for veterans in Beaufort County. And you have a resolution attached. If you'd like for me to read that for the record, I will.
Thank you.
So, Resolution 2023-11-06-02, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Beaufort County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Beaufort County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion posts, Veterans of Foreign Wars post, Disabled American Veterans post, religious groups, civic service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that between 44% and 72% of all service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Beaufort County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Beaufort County hereby declares November 6, 2023, through Veterans Day, November the 11, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And whereas be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, Beaufort County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence through November 6, 2023, through November 12, 2023. Adopted this the sixth day of November 2023.
Thank you, Brian. This time, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item is public comments, and we have two people. Remind you that you have three minutes, a limit of three minutes. The first one is Mr. Earl Carney.
Three minutes may be a bit lengthy. I live at Schooner Point, and they changed the house numbers out there, the county did. As a result of that, we've got to change our driver's license, we've got to change several things. And I understand it was made in order to enhance the response time of EMS group, and that's commendable in itself. However, before this thing was put into effect, I don't believe that those responsible for that checked to see what all the ramifications were. I endeavored to renew my driver's license and change the address online, which you can normally do. It wouldn't take it. And it came back, and it told me the address couldn't be verified. So I called one of the county employees that was involved in making this change. His name was Nolan. And Nolan told me on October 16 that he had affected the change. I went back, tried it again, still won't work. I tried it before I came up here today, and it still won't work. I think it's great for our county employees to look out for the citizens of the county and try to make sure that when the EMS groups go out, that that address there is what is known. But before they implement these changes, they ought to make sure that it works, you know? I spent 35 years with Lockheed Martin. I worked in flight test engineering. You better make sure it works before you put people up there. Those things fall out of there. And we ought to do the same thing with the work that we do here. And one other issue that I've got, I had to put my wife in the hospital here. I had to call EMS, and they were out there just like that. Let me tell you, buddy, they were on the ball. So she came to the hospital for kidney stones. We were there 13 hours trying to get out. Now EMS is a one-way transport system. They pick you up and they take you to the hospital, and that is commendable, and they did a great job. And I understand the reasons why they only go one way, because they can't, they're not running a taxi service. But let me tell you, my wife is 82 years old. She was sick. She should have been kept in the hospital. And I thought about how much money the county contributes to that organization out of my pocket, and plus what I'm paying for insurance. But I couldn't get her home. I couldn't put her in my car. My house is on pilings. I had to have something to get her up there. Took me 13 hours. And I'm a veteran, but I have never had anything in the United States Navy that compare with what I've been through in this county in the last two months. Because in the Navy, I worked as a radar armament. What came into Combat Information Center where I work, it had to be correct and it had to be right. I don't understand why these people that draft things like changing these house numbers can't ensure that when they finish their job, that people like me can go online, make that change, instead of having to go to DMV. For, it takes me 40 minutes, it took me 40, 45 minutes, for my wife and I, we're both of us are in our 80s, to go up here and do that when I can sit there on a computer and do it. But I can't do it because some county employee didn't do his job. I would like to ask you people to get in touch with Nolan and ask him to correct that situation so that those of us that don't wish to make that trip to DMV here in the county can go online and get our licenses. And I'm glad you made the change. It makes sense. A lot of things make sense. But what doesn't make sense is that people go out here, you know, make all these changes and don't see what the ramifications of it are. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Bruce Gray.
I'm here again to speak again with the horrible situation of child sex trafficking, prostitution that's going on here in Beaufort County. Again, for 10 years now, I have been turning these people in. And when they started threatening to kill me when my child was only six years old because I would not let them use her, we can't get help from the Sheriff's Department. And I want to elaborate a little bit on that. The very, and in this process also, she was raped at 10 years old by these same people, and we can't get anything done. At 10 years old, the investigating officer, Brad Shackford, told me that the only words that come from the investigating officer to me, the parent, was, "Are you Bruce Gray?" in the hallway. And then I said, "Yes." He said, "It's only prostitution." Talking about my 10-year-old child being raped. The other two that this, the new sheriff has sent to me to talk to me about my child's rape at 10 years old, Mr. Waters and Mr. Rose, both said, and talking to me about my child, that what grownups do with grownups is their business. Again, more people in the Sheriff's Department taking up for people who prostitute women The people I've been turning in, the first people to threaten to kill me, three of them have threatened, Paula Jean Maudlin, Henry Williams, Austin Asby, were the three that have threatened to kill me because of turning the prostitution ring in here. It's pretty disheartening. I don't think that the Sheriff's Department is that incompetent to where they can't get one person out of this organization in 10 years. It's because they're covering it up. It's a conspiracy and cover-up. The people that I've been turning, everybody here will know these names when I'm getting ready to say them. Everybody here, if you've been in Beaufort County long enough, you will know these names. And no, I'm telling the truth on the organization I've been turning in for 10 years. A.G. Swanner, Macio Daniels, Nelson Shepherd, that's who started this organization and is still continuing today. Two of the head ones just got up with me this last month on my Facebook, calling me out as a liar on this. And until I showed them where I had so much proof and I had witnesses that would testify against them, that was Tammy Swanner and Jason Shepherd. Again, showing how the Shepherds and Swanners are still in this organization. Now, ain't nobody can dispute what I'm saying. This is just horrible. And why we can't get an investigation into this huge organization that everybody knows is happening? I don't know. I'm sorry, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, legislative updates. I did not see Senator Perry or Representative Kidwell. We're going to items for consent. I entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
One second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Down to public hearing and item for decision, petition to name a road Clearwater Drive. Okay, I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second. Okay, all those in favor of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Okay, Joshua.
All right. We just have a petition to name a private road submitted by Shay Asby. The petition was submitted to name an existing private drive that's approximately 50 foot in width, and it is currently serving a unaddressed parcel for which the reason for the road being named is put forth for the application. We have, the notice was publicly advertised sufficiently with the posting in the Washington Daily News for two consecutive weeks. News for two consecutive weeks, on October 25th, 2023, and then November 1st. And the notices of the public hearing were also posted in the Beaufort County Courthouse 10 days prior to the day of the public hearing and no more than 25. The county requires three proposed names. And the submitted names with the application were Clearwater Drive, Tally Drive, and Ellie Drive. And staff has determined that the applicant's first proposed name, Clearwater Drive, does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County. Nor are there any soundalikes. And we recommend the approval of Clearwater Drive and the nersey attached property record card if you have any questions.
Any questions of Joshua?
Well, we don't have public hearings on questions, or what?
Is there, we didn't have anyone sign up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that wants to speak as it relates to the name change? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, now it's open for questions from the Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
I have some questions. Did I understand that we're naming this for a one lot for a house that may come sometime in the future?
They want to go ahead and build, is my understanding. It's just they can't get an address on it because it just has to be named since that's the third, it would be the third address on that actual private road. There's that first house, house right there at the right, and then Mr. Asby's house, which is the one already existing very far back end. This would just be across from the...
Oh, okay, so there will be three dwellings?
Yes.
On this? Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve to name the road Clearwater Drive. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a report from the Register of Deeds. There is a handout here in our board material.
Good afternoon, or good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
After the last meeting, which was held October 2nd, there were many things reported that were not true. Things were made reference to that were not true. So I would like to just go over a few of those things. But first tell you that we are modernizing the Register of Deeds office, and I'm very proud of that fact. Our services, we have more convenient services, and technology is moving fast forward. Now, I did put something in front of you. If you'll go to the second page, this is a survey that was started with the other counties that no longer print real estate books nor indexes. And I'd like for you to take a look at some of those dates in which they stopped. They go back as all the way to the 1960s. Many of them, it's because of space limitations. Many were because of updated legislation. So with that being said, I have excellent news for you. Excellent, so be prepared, okay? If you will turn to Exhibit A. Exhibit A verifies the deeds that are being registered, recorded in the Beaufort County Register of Deeds. That has never stopped since I have taken office January 3rd, even though I have been accused of not recording deeds. Now, if I was not recording deeds, the attorneys would be on the courthouse steps waiting to drag me out. So now that we have verified that deeds are being recorded, I would like to bring your attention to Exhibit B. Exhibit B came from Charles Sipsak. He's Albert Coates Distinguished Professor of Public Law and Government from the School of Government in Chapel Hill, UNC. And I think all of you have received that letter that states that the Register of Deeds is in fact in compliance with the law. I have not broken a law. I am not a criminal. No matter what someone may think. And the general statutes that verify that follow up. Now, there was another. If you'll go to Exhibit D, that was a request from County Commissioner Richardson, and I think he's got that under his line item near the back of the agenda. So that was a response from me, and I think that was very detailed. All of our documents are being backed up locally. We have a virtual server. They are being backed up in the cloud. They are also being put on microfilm. I am in compliance with the law. Now, there is something, for some reason, e-recordings have really, this is the one I want, if you go to Exhibit E. Now, the statement was made that Jennifer said we were running out of space, but never indicated when we would run out of space. So let me draw your attention to Exhibit E. Exhibit E was during the capital improvement plan, where she did in fact bring before the board that she was running out of space. She gave specifics in approximately two years or less. Now, you know, we not only record deeds, real estate documents, we also record birth, death, delayed birth, and marriages. And she did in fact put this in there. And if you will go to the top, it was recommended, but it remained unfunded. Now, we were lucky that, here we are, it's 2023. We are out of room. What you saw, the commissioners that came to the tour that I scheduled, and I thank you for being there. There are 10 map cabinets in the basement. Map indexes are in the basements. Original tourings are in the basement. They don't need to be in the basement. They need to be upstairs in a controlled environment. So I'd like to bring that to your attention. Now, if you'll go to Exhibit F, and I'm trying to make this quick. I became Register of Deeds January 3rd. Prior to me becoming Register of Deeds, Jennifer Whitehurst, you will see in 2022, e-recordings, non-e-recordings, and if you go down the list, she started e-recordings in 2020. So I don't know why this is all of a sudden a big thing when it's been done for the past few years. But I wanted to share that with you so you could see this is not something that I put in there, but I'm glad she did. Now, if you will go to Exhibit G. Exhibit G shows you that 96 out of 100 counties are e-recording. Okay? And if you'll look above that, there are many counties that have started e-recording maps. There's actually, after I checked with Secretary of State, there's 38 that are recording, and there are more that are ready. I'm not ready. I've not had enough research done, and there are some things I'm waiting for them to tweak before I ever consider e-recording maps. There was another statement made during the October meeting that by accepting e-recordings, that was the lazy way out. Now, let me verify. If you look at Exhibit H, the process of e-recordings and over-the-counter recordings are basically the same. The delivery method is just different. And I can tell you that our attorneys and the folks that use this service are very thankful for this service. It saves them time, money. Now, I'm trying to go through this fast, so excuse me, because I know y'all got me on a limited time. Now, for some reason, somebody printed in a paper, which I have several papers here, that I'm out of compliance with the budget. I would like to refer to Exhibit I. Exhibit I shows I am doing my due diligence in reviewing contracts and costs in the Register of Deeds. Yes, I was sworn in January 3rd. However, I turned back in over $45,000 into the general fund because at the time I could not justify some of the expenditures that were sitting before me. And if you will go to Exhibit J. Exhibit J, I think, has been given to all of you, but it also states, oh, Exhibit J refers to a comment about the contract for the recording notification system, or some call it broad alert. That contract was signed by the previous register in May of 2022. Now, I did send that contract to our county attorney to review because I had grave concerns. And he said that it had been signed, and we are obligated, and $12,000 had already been expended, and if I canceled that contract, it would cost us more. So I would have never signed that contract if it was me after I found out what other counties were paying for the service. Okay. Now, if we go to, one thing that we talked about during our tour was digitizing the rest of the records at the Register of Deeds. After talking with some of the attorneys during that meeting, we realized that we could go back to 1917. And Exhibit K shows that in order to do those index, to digitize the index, it would cost approximately $30,000. And if we'll move over to Exhibit L, that is to record, digitize, to digitize the documents all the way back to 1917, which is very comparable with the searches and things that are going on. And this is feedback from the attorneys and researchers. So I wanted to share that. This will be coming back to you at some point in time to look for money to do this. I think it's imperative. I have 620 books that are not digitized. Now, we do not have, we just don't do real estate. We also record all the births, delayed births, deaths, marriages, and we made indexes for all those. Okay. Now to the draft minutes from the last meeting. Now, some of this information, and I'm just going to highlight one of these where it says in one of these newspapers that the commissioners before me voted not to record deeds. Now, I know that was not the motion that was on the floor. So we know that deeds are being recorded in Beaufort County. Some of the other things I'd like to bring your attention to and just clarify. There was a letter in here that was very instrumental from the Secretary of State. And I would like to read this letter and be sure that is recorded in the minutes. And y'all, I haven't been much longer, but this is very important information. A commissioner reached out to the Secretary of State stating that I wasn't doing things right. And I'd like to read that, and I'd like to be sure that it's in the minutes. Thank you for your earlier conversation and apologies for the delays in, now, this email was sent to the commissioner, and I was CC'd on it. I have forgotten about, I hadn't forgotten about you, but I also want to touch base with the register to learn specifics of implementation before responding. Just as reiteration from the phone conversation, maintaining records electronically and ceasing to maintain hard copies of new recordings of real estate documents is both legal and commonplace in this state. There is no requirement for the register to obtain approval for such a change. Records are commonly stored both locally and remotely in their electronic format. But statutes do require that there be a non-electronic backup where the documents are archived to film and generally preserved by the state archives in Raleigh. These are both the practices currently followed in Beaufort County. In general, registers who decide to cease maintaining bound books of paper deeds do so because of space limitations, but additional savings are incurred by going digital. In the case of cybersecurity incidents, contingency plans are in place where the register can continue to accept recordings manually until such time as systems become available and documents can be digitized. Counties with both local and remote storage of data have typically had little to no impact due to the redundancy of the system. Maintenance of hard copy indexes is not required, but can make searching available when evenly, when even automated systems are down. Beaufort County continues to do this. We are still printing indexes. And we are still printing temporary indexes, which go in the vault for our attorneys to utilize and our researchers. Now, the rest of that is just referring to statutes that say just that. So I wanted to be sure that that was in the minutes. And I can assure you, I have told every member of this commission that my door is always open and you can ask me any questions, phone, text, come in. And I'm more than happy to walk you through. What I can tell you is we are out of space. If I was not out of space, I'll tell you what I would do. I've got a cabinet downstairs that has original tourings filed down there. I don't want them downstairs. I've got 10 map cabinets, and I have map indexes. I have other permanent documents that I cannot get rid of according to state archives. But I want to assure each and every one of you, now, thank you for upholding your oath of office last month. Because if you hadn't of, you would have thrown me out of compliance. And I appreciate that. And something would have had have been done if you had done that. And I'm glad we didn't have to go there. But what I would like to tell you is that I have done my due diligence. I took an oath of office when I was sworn in to uphold the Constitution, the laws of this state, just like every elected official before me. Now, I want to draw your attention to a statement that was made at the commissioners' meeting last month, which really threw me back. Now, all this information has gone somewhere else for review, and I'm waiting for my feedback. There was a commissioner that made a statement during the last meeting. Now, this is where I'm drawing my line, and I'm drawing it really hard. He said that money comes to us. He said, "We use the money as part of the revenue to pay these people." He said, "We have the final say, or we just stop paying them if they do not do the job right." He said, "I don't care if they're elected or not." Now, I stand up for my staff. I have a very dedicated staff. Our work is done before we leave our office every day. Now, I don't know if Commissioner Deathwich was referring to me or my entire staff, but that is an unacceptable comment. That was you. You cannot legally do that. That is in violation of federal regulations. Now, all I want to say...
May I answer?
Just a moment, sir.
Let her finish.
I really enjoy working in the Register of Deeds office. I enjoy the work. I enjoy the research, and I enjoy doing new things and bringing new features to the citizens of Beaufort County. They put me in there... They put me in there to work hard, to uphold my oath, and to provide even better service. And we are there. We're going there stronger and stronger. This was not a tactful, it's just, I think everybody deserves respect and deserves to be heard. Now, I have been slandered, I have been defamed, and I've got all of it in this folder right here. Complete fabrications, untruths, and very liable, liableless. I have been called a criminal, that I am breaking the law. My hands to Jesus in front of you, in front of this board, that is not the case. And with that, I will close, and thank you for, for your support, because we do rely on you for budget, a workplace in which we have run out of space, and our working hours. And I am always here to work with you, answer any questions, no matter who it is. Stan, the invitation still stands for you to visit me at the Register of Deeds, as well as you, Commissioner Richardson.
I've been there several times a week.
And I asked you on October 2nd, you were in the, my department. Now, everybody knew that I was not here October 2nd. My husband had a heart attack. I was right where I needed to be. But I asked you when you were in my office if you needed any information, if I could answer any questions for you.
I told you I already had the information.
And that's exactly what you said. And I thank you. And please, come see me anytime. I am more than happy to willing, more than willing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Grusher Deeds, uh, Garris.
Yes.
I am, you can come back up here if you want to. I'm not clear on your statement. I will check the last tape against this tape.
It's on page five of the draft minutes?
Well, I, I will watch it on tape.
Okay, I watched on tape, and then I requested the draft.
Okay, I will, I will check it out.
But do you stand by that statement?
You, I don't know. You, you could be taking it completely out of context. I will tell you this. We, we pay for what happens. We have to say what goes on in the Register of Deeds. For you to say that we don't, and we were gonna put you out of business and put you out of compliance because we thought it would be wise to also record these in, on hard copy, because I've got some questions for you in a minute. And I would like to know what your suggestion would be if these, these instances happen, and they could very well happen. So, you may have taken what I said out of compliance, but if worse come to worse, yes, we do have the power of the purse. It happened years ago during Vietnam. The, the president could have completely gone on and kept prosecuting that war, but he couldn't because they quit paying for it. Congress quit paying for it, and we are like Beaufort County's Congress. So, I will look at what you said, I said, and I will look at the context, and we'll see if it's as, as striking as what you said.
It is on page five, in the first paragraph, and if you stand by that statement, I would like to know.
Well, it, it is what it is. I mean, it's not a question of whether I stand by it or not, it is what it is. I mean, that's the way life is. Okay, I have a question. You said, since, I wasn't gonna mention this, but since you kind of halfway mentioned it, you said that we would put you out of co, uh, out of compliance, and I think I made the resolution that you start immediately recording these deeds and deeds of trust and all other documents, and record them in, in hard copy, and also do a index in hard copy, because we need that as well.
Index books are still being printed.
In hard copy?
And I have eight slots left for index books, yes, in hard copy, and we're doing temporary index books. So, in case something should go down, all of our attorneys and our researchers have those books in the vault to go to. So, but we are still printing index books, in, index books. So, right now, I'm in compliance because, yes, we are digitizing our records, we also have them backed up on film, they're backed up locally, and they're also backed up in the cloud.
You would have been out of compliance if some commissioner up here had said, "You need to stop doing the electronic recording."
If y'all had ordered me to start to download everything from the 3rd of January 4th, then I would have had an issue with that, and I would have gone to Raleigh for advisement on that, because, um, you know, it is specifically states in the statute.
But you would have still been in compliance if you started recording these in hard copy, right?
If you would look at Charles Sipzak.
Oh, I read it.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Well, I think it's in the second paragraph.
I s, I still didn't see that, 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 that if you record hard copies, you're out of compliance.
See, right now, we are participating in the state microfilm program.
I get that, I, I understand that quite well.
So, we are, we are, we are according to statute, we are doing, now, Jennifer is the one that put this information out there. Everybody's seen it, Hood has seen it, he's been in there. He says every week, notice was put up that as of January thirty, uh, December 31st, that no more documents would be, would be printed, hard copies wouldn't be printed and put in books. Now, what she instructed the staff to do is that you fill that last real estate book, and then you stop printing hard copies. So, the last real estate document that went in there, and I referred into my email response, was dated January 4th.
Right. But you also, since you made mention of what I said, maybe out of context, what was in context at that meeting last month? Nobody requested that you stop recording electronically and making a digital manifestation for all posterity and put in the cloud and, in, on any other server. Nobody asked that you stop doing that.
No, you did not, but Jennifer made that decision as Register of Deeds to stop because of no space. Now, you made this-
You, you stayed in compliance.
But now, look, but i, if I had plenty of room, would I still printing, be printing hard copies? I can't tell you right now. Many people across the state are no longer printing hard copies. You're eventually, no matter where you're going-
Yeah.
You're gonna run out of space. It's always gonna be a-
I understand that, but I think you're conflating a lot of issues to, to prove your point-
No, I'm not.
-which I'm finding hard to follow.
What I'm giving you are the facts that I have pulled from the data that was before me.
Okay. But we, we do agree that if you did print hard copy and you did put the backup on microfiche, and you did also electronically record everything and have a digital manifestation for all posterity, you would be in compliance, would you not?
I would not be in compliance.
Why? Please tell me why.
I would not be in compliance.
Please, please tell me why.
It says that I would not be, let's go to the attachment. Let's go to Exhibit. Okay. Please see the email from Charles Sipzak, UNC School of Government. It's, "My understanding that the RD is particip, is participating in the state microfilm backup program and is there, and is therefore compliant with GS 132-8.2 for preservation of backup copies of real estate books." As noted in his mail, a paper backup copy would not be compliant.
Yes, I understand that, but you're conflating this, just, just-
If you want more clarification.
No, no, I, I, listen, I can, I understand English. I understand what he read, what you just read to us right there. It made total sense. He did not say you cannot have paper. Basically, what he insinuated, if you did paper only, you would be out of compliance. Nobody's asking you to do paper only.
I can go back in and look at it, but why are we gonna, are you gonna supply more room for the register?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
And, and do, and do these commissioners think, do you think it's best to continue to print hard copies?
I know, that's what I'm saying as a question. But you don't have it now, is that what you're saying? You don't have any room now?
No, I don't, because if I had room, you know what I would do? I would move every map cabinet that I have stuck in that basement, which too, I have to replace.
Well, that's, that's another issue that we can discuss later about how to get you that room.
Because there was no space.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go to another subject. You, you got something else? Okay, Commissioner, I give up my time to one of the other commissioners. Okay. To Mr. Richardson.
Uh, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time and attention. God bless.
Thank you, Carol.
What the issue is here, and I raise the issue because as a surveyor, I use registers of deeds extensively. I use our registers of deeds several times a week. I use registered deeds in about twenty other counties, so I'm familiar with what goes on in the Register of Deeds office. The Register of Deeds is conflating the issues. What, what we, what we have been doing for the last several years is in compliance with what the state requires. The state does not mandate anything other than we have a backup system. We have been in compliance with that. Secretary of State provides that backup system on microfilm. We have been making hard copies and filing them in our courthouse. Several other counties do the same thing. What has happened with the digital onslaught is a lot of people think that it is real cute to put this stuff on an electron and store it somewhere, and that works real fine as long as the electricity is working. None of the systems the Register of Deeds has talked to you about, even her backup system works when the power is off. My, my purpose in this is what protects the public. What protects the public is when you can go to the courthouse and find your deed. Take a power of attorney as a great example. Someone gives you a power of attorney. Are you gonna carry it on your hip pocket every day? No, it's recorded with the deeds at the courthouse. And when you have to find that thing quickly, are you gonna have to go to the courthouse and see a clerk to see if they can find the power of attorney? People change powers of attorney. How do you know they got the right one? You can talk about index books. Let's go to what the Register of Deeds is saying about index books. What she's leading you to believe is abs, has absolutely no value. If you've got an index of deeds and powers of attorney and these other documents, and it tells you where that's recorded, but it's recorded on the internet and the power is off, you still can't get to it. I have not seen, and I'm in the Register of Deeds several times, sometimes several times a week, I have not seen an instrument over there that the public can go to and personally look up the items that have been recorded since the first of the year, because they're all on an electron somewhere. Now, you could shoot, in theory, she's gonna tell you, well, you can come and ask a clerk and he'll help you find it. Well, we're moving more and more and getting further and further into third world governments, where you have to go beg a public official for permission for something. We don't need to do that. The best protection that Beaufort County, and that's what we're talking about here, is how to protect the citizens of Beaufort County in their interest. The best protection you can have is for her to keep recording on the electron like she's doing, sending it to the state archive like she is doing, and, and to have a hard copy in the courthouse that you can go look at with an index. That's your best protection. Just because these other counties think they're so cute with their electronic recording, and we don't need any space anymore, is not in the public interest. Because if you happen to have one of these magnetic storms that comes off of the sun periodically, and we have, in recorded history, we have had several of those, it's gonna shut down most of the computers in the United States that not, are not shielded, and that's almost every one of them. Then, all of a sudden, you are rebuilding your system. There has never been a computer program written that can't be hacked. Every one of them that's ever been written has been hacked, and guess what? Guess who was hacked the first part of this year? The Secretary of State was hacked. So, you got your stuff up there. It took them two weeks, as they told me, to get it back, and then they didn't say what they got back, and they didn't say how much money they paid to get it back, and all that sort of stuff. I'm trying to protect the citizens of Beaufort County. Now, insofar as violating the law, here's where the violation of the law comes in. The budget ordinance is a law. It is a ordinance. It's a law. The reason that it's passed as an ordinance and a law is to keep public officials from doing what she has done, and that is taking the money and going off and doing what they want to do, which is not in the public interest. When we passed the budget ordinance, I was sitting right here, when we passed the budget ordinance the last two years, we have passed an ordinance, considerate without exception in the Register of Deeds office, that they're gonna continue the practices that we have been doing since the war between the states, because the Yankees burned all of our records. So, we were doing it before then, but we don't have records except back from then. The, the citizens of Beaufort County need this protection. So what, is my father used to tell me, if John jumps off the bridge, are you gonna jump off the bridge behind him? Just because the other counties are recording this stuff, they're gonna be out to lunch when the hard times come. But Beaufort County is gonna have what it needs if we're still recording deeds. Now, the, far as the budget goes, it's an ordinance. We did not pass the ordinance saying that she could stop filing hard copies. The ordinance presumes, as the manager has explained, this famous continuation budget, that everybody's gonna keep doing what he's been doing with the, only the changes that are made in the ordinance for that year, and no changes have been made to say that the Register of Deeds can stop recording hard copies of deeds. I want her to continue doing what she's doing. The state law does not mandate at any place that a Register of Deeds by herself can decide to change recording methods. Why is that? Because you have county commissioners. We fund the Register of Deeds. We give her a budget to operate off of. We pay the people that work for her, and our last budget ordinance pays them to continue to file hard copies. So, she did violate the law. She is violating the law, and she can say that she's not all that she wants to. Wait till I finish, and then that power attorney gets to be a big deal when it gets lost. And I, I would ask the Register of Deeds when she gets a chance to respond to me, she says she hauled off seven truckloads of trash out of the Register of Deeds office. Well, let me tell you something. I've been in business, in the surveying business in Beaufort County since nineteen-eighty. That's a long time. I've been around the Register of Deeds office when people would come to John Morgan and other registers of deeds and say things like, "I have important documents that we no longer have a need for or a use for or whatever. They have some historical value. They're, they're public, formal documents. I don't really have a repository that anybody says that I can take these two and, and leave them. Would you take them?" And every time I first heard it, seen it happen, the Register of Deeds has said, "Well, yes, we, we will take them if you have no other place to put them, uh, and, uh, and we will, we will take them for protection." So, the Register of Deeds admitted publicly, right here, I read the minutes, that she hauled off seven and a half truckloads of those documents. What I say, what I'm saying to you is, we have a register of deeds that really doesn't feel for the public. She's into the modern woke world of it's all gotta be on an electron. I, I'm sorry, I have the floor. Mr., would you please bring order to the, to the room?
I, I will, and I'll give you one more minute.
You'll give me, is that all?
And please, please do not do a personal attack.
I'm not doing a personal attack. I stated a fact.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. You're wandering off in-
The Register of Deeds is supposed to be recording hard copies. We pay her to do that. The law says she's supposed to do it, and she is not doing it. There are a lot of other issues here that I will keep harping on. Out of space is a big falsehood. That is a lie. That is not true. I personally measured it. I personally know the number of desks that are in the Register of Deeds. We have eight years of places to put hard copies of books simply by building up the stands that are in there now. Now, they're gonna tell you people have to stand at those. Guess what? Nobody goes to the Register of Deeds office anymore, very few people, unless you already need a critical document. So, there's plenty of space there. Saying that we're out of space for books is totally false. The, um, and I, I explained to you why this business about, oh, we're covered, we got an index. Well, you have all indexes in the world, but if you don't have the need that that index calls for, you still got nothing. So, this is a big issue. I continue to keep pushing this because it is in the interest of the protection of the property of the citizens of Beaufort County, your livelihood, your heirs. That information needs to be available to you so you can go get it without having to beg a public official. Would you please start your computer and pull this up for me? And then you don't know whether you got it right or not. If it's all out there in hard copy, and it's all out there in indexes, you can cross-reference, you can search, search, and you can verify. You can't do it when it's on an electron. You can only get good information. That being said, I use the electronic filings in about twenty counties for my research to do surveys, and I- And I love using them because I don't have to go there. I want to continue doing what we're doing, but I want the public to be protected. And you are not protected with doing the minimal, and this is what she's doing, is the minimal system that the state of North Carolina requires. And that's not good enough for the citizens of Beaufort County.
I'm going to give you a chance, Carolyn, to respond, but just hold it for a second. I'm going to let the other commissioners make comments.
I got a question for Mr. Richardson. When you sit there and say that we've passed the budget so she can do this and she can do that, I don't recall that you've ever passed, voted for a budget. So how can you say that?
Mr., sir, what difference does my vote have on any issue that comes up? It's scurrilous for you to criticize me because I don't vote for really dumb ideas that you vote for.
Okay, okay. Any... Okay, I'll ask the audience to please show respect and listen to the comments. Any other commissioner? Okay. You weren't here. We're wrapping this up. You've had it. Commissioner Reddolt.
I think it's probably appropriate that the people of Beaufort County understand what's going on here. This is totally a political show, a battle between two people that is generated because Mr. Richardson doesn't feel that he's in control anymore. And the issue about recording and hard copies just doesn't seem to fit into the narrative that that's been discussed before. For example, I think your opinion would be that...
Don't put words in my mouth.
Show respect, Commissioner Richardson.
Show respect. Can't put words in my mouth, that's respect.
Please, please listen.
Well, I'm sorry. I know you're 83 years old, and I ought to be respecting you. But the...
Age is wise.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. Joe. The best that government should not do for people what they can do for themselves. The best record is the original. And guess who has the original? The owner. Okay? They're the ones that got the original. All the recorder of deeds has is copies. They're not originals. And when you're talking about paper, we just talked about the fact that the Yankees burned it down, so we lost all those papers. We've got no sprinkler system in that courthouse. If there was a fire there, then all those records are gone, and if they're not, they're all completely covered with water damage anyways. So, and then last, we said, nobody goes to the recorder of deeds office. So what difference does it make? You can search all those records from your home in the comfort of your office. You don't have to go to the courthouse. You don't have to make that trip. You don't have to park and climb the stairs. So this is just a tug of war for a political deal going on, and it is just not worth our time. Okay? She is not violating any laws. The law that covers this is statute 47-16-4, and it says that the Recorder of Deeds may receive, index, store, archive, and transmit electronic documents, may provide for access to and for search and retrieval of documents and information by electronic means. Who accepts electronic documents for recording shall continue to accept paper documents as authorized by a law, which means they can't stop taking paper, which, by the way, the courts are doing. The state courts are all moving towards not accepting any paper. They maybe convert paper documents accepted for recording into electronic form. That's the law. Okay? We, being the county, does not trump state law.
I'd like to answer some of the questions. I think we've already said enough. I'm going to give...
I have an understanding of this is deeper than...
I'll give you one minute, as long as you stick with what we're talking about. Okay?
Well, we are talking about something very important.
One minute.
One minute. I'll take a minute or more, whatever we need.
You're going to get one minute.
Frankie, would you please behave?
This is an important issue. This is an important issue for the people. It's one of the things we do in the county, speak fast. We record documents. My policy is, we need to record in as many places, excuse me, we need to record in as many processes as possible, stored in as many locations as is feasible. This is my position. We need to do electronic, we need to microfish, we need to store that electronic data on as many servers as is feasible, because you could put it on 15 different servers, but you have to put them on servers wisely. What is the cloud? It's server space. That's all it is. That's what we need to do. Nobody said we didn't need to do it, but there's some things, there's some reasons why we need to do this, why we need to have it hard copied, why we need to have it microfished, why we need to have it on many servers. And some of these servers need to be in places that may be impregnable from electronic magnetic bursts, pulses. Okay? Burst, pulse, same thing. The carrying effect of September 1859, which took down the entire telegraph system in America.
You're minute.
Okay, I know this is over your head, Commissioner.
You told us this at the last meeting.
This is what I said at the last meeting, and it was conflated. It was conflated that this was all about going after the Register of Deeds. This is not it. We are looking after the people of Beaufort County. We're not talking about the lawyers or the realtors, but the people, their documents. Now, what happens when the lights go down? What happens when the grid is fried? Do you understand that?
You should have a copy. You should have a copy of your...
A copy of what happens.
Yeah.
Well, what is that? What happens? I'll tell you what happens.
Why don't you have a copy of your...
That's not the real world.
What? Don't you have a copy of your deeds?
Don't you have a gap?
Do you understand that North Carolina is a race to record state? It is what is registered in the courthouse that matters.
Go ahead and round it up. Finish it. Finish up.
Well, you interrupted me, Mr. Chairman. I care about the people's documents. I care about recording it in as many processes as possible and storing it in as many locations as is feasible. I will always say that. Nobody suggested that we not do electronic data recording. Nobody said that. Commissioner Richardson didn't say it. You want to paint this as this going against each other? Okay, do that. But I don't have a truck with a Register of Deeds. I want it done properly, as I understand it needs to be done. Okay, you guys don't take it seriously? I do. Commissioner Richardson does. And saying that these things are never going to happen, they could happen.
Yeah.
You'd be on record right now saying, this isn't going to happen. Everything needs to be electronic, that's all we need to do.
Okay. Carolyn, do you want to respond?
There's only one thing that I want to say.
Okay.
This is going off the rails, and I deserve a little more respect than what I'm getting.
And I agree wholeheartedly.
When he refers to the trash that was taken off from the Register of Deeds office, yes, I have done a deep job. I called state archives to come to the Register of Deeds. They went through every box. They went through every book. They said, this needs to go, you can trash this, because proof sheets, once you index, you do your redactions, and then it's sent into permanent index, those sheets are no longer necessary. There were 20 years' worth of proof sheets. They had to go. There was a lot of stuff that was just trash, lids to empty containers, things like that. So anything that was taken out of the Register of Deeds office was approved by state archives according to the retention schedule. So, you know, I took an oath, I am upholding my oath, and I have no intention of breaking the law, and I have no intention of anybody forcing me to break the law. But, you know, I'm here to work with you. I want to work well with you. But Richardson and I don't see eye to eye. We haven't for two and a half years, and that's not going to change. But I'm not going to disrespect you, sir. But I also expect you to show me a little respect when I'm before the commissioners. And with that, I shall close.
Don't preach somewhere else.
I apologize, Carolyn.
No problem.
Anyway, we're going to move to the next item, and that is the, let's see, we pulled the sheriffs. So we're down to request for the funding for the Aurora Medical Clinic improvements. Wes? I'm sorry. Christina?
No, he's still here. He'll be up next. Good evening, commissioners. Included in your agenda packet on page 231 is information regarding the Aurora Medical Clinic. As a reminder, back at the August 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved transferring control of the Aurora Medical Clinic from ECU Health back to the county. ECU Health, as you all know, ceased operations at that building, so they contacted the county and asked if we wanted to make that transfer, and the commissioners did that. At that point in time, it was noted that the need for improvements to the building and to the grounds would be needed, and that funds for those improvements were not included in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Again, this was, a decision was made in August, our budget, our fiscal year starts in July. So that was not something that we foresaw and included in the facility's budget. At that point in time, I believe there were multiple options that were discussed as far as what the building could possibly be used for and what the county wanted to do. So the manager and I discussed various different options and understand the decision has not been made. So based upon that, staff completed a very thorough walkthrough of the building and came up with an estimated cost in order to do a renovation of the building, to update it. And there are a lot of assumptions that were made, because again, we're not knowing exactly what the use of the building would be. But on page 231, you'll see a summary of that, where it includes various landscaping. And this would basically be removing all of the landscaping that is there and then going back in and putting in new. Then exterior improvements, which would be roof repairs, various replacement of siding, windows and doors, and also quite a bit of work for the loading dock and the ramp that is at the rear of the building. It's not currently ADA compliant, and it's actually crumbling in places. So if we were to utilize that as a loading dock, it would need quite a bit of structural repairs done for the integrity of it. Interior improvements, again, we made some generalizations of what it would be to be used as an office space, including carpet, interior finishes such as carpet tile, painting, ceiling tile, locking, and door hardware replacement, as well as electrical upgrades and cleaning of ductwork. And we did include the replacement of one of the HVAC units. There are currently three units there. They have age on them, but we're not looking at replacing all of them, but just replacing one of the three. The electrical upgrades is replacing the panels, again, because of the panels that are there. The National Electrical Association recommends those or replace them federal specific, so you can't get replacements for those. And then we also included the cost for utilities, because again, that was not included in the fiscal year 2024 budget. And then because there are so many unknowns at this particular time, we did include 15% contingency. So looking at that, it's $372,000, just to give you an idea of what it would be. Again, this does not include specific reworking of interior walls. Some of the suggestions of what might be done is putting other people down out of other departments of the county. So if that's the case, then you would need to remove an existing wall, rework the ceiling grid, the acoustical tile, as well as the lighting, rework the HVAC. So we have included some of that cost in there. It does not include anything major that would be required for a healthcare clinic, such as a negative pressure room, or some of the improvements that were done to our health department on Highland Drive during the COVID situation. So again, it's more general things. If anything specific for a specific type of medical service, we did not upgrade any electrical for a certain type of machine or scanning machine or anything like that. Again, this is just a general number so that you can, are aware of the current condition of the building and what it would take to totally redo the building if we wanted to update the building and have it so that we could walk away from it, say, for 10 years without looking to go back and to continue to make improvements to it. But this is for information. I believe the recommendation from management staff is if the board chooses, you could appropriate funds from the ARPA fund balance in order to set this aside in the capital project fund so that the funds are sitting there for whatever the future may hold for the building, for the use of the building.
Commissioner Langley.
I was looking at what you were saying that was not included.
Yes, sir.
Did you do a cost estimate on what these items would add to it? I mean, I'm just of the opinion, if you're going to do it, just go ahead and do it.
No, sir, because I really like the specifics. It's very difficult for me to pull up to this high level when there are just so many unknowns for what the use of the building is. But again, the computer, the servers, the Wi-Fi, the network drops that's used as a medical facility, I am unsure of the requirements for medical office retention and things like that. I will tell you...
Well, I'm thinking more in terms of the generator and the building's security system, because I think that will be extremely important.
The generator, it's small, I mean, that would be around $50,000 to $70,000 at the absolute max, I would think, based upon the square footage and based upon the generator for this building, as well as the administration building. The building's security system with the cameras. Brian, I know that you've dealt with EIS with some of that. Do you think $20,000 would be sufficient?
What is the square footage?
It's just under $5,100.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't see how we can make a decision about this until we see what the future of the building is. I mean, spending $372,000 on that building, not knowing what its future is, looks to me like folly. I think we should, it's more important for us to decide what our strategy is for disposal of the building or use of the building, and then go from there. I mean, you know, it may be a medical facility. If it's a medical facility that has certain kinds of government financing, that's really what we want, at least that's what I've heard most of the commissioners say, that has a certain kind of government financing, we don't have to spend anything on it. So we're kind of struggling here. I think what our goal should be is to find a use for the building and advertise it for a facility and see what we get, because then we can decide what we need to spend money for or not spend money for.
Brian?
Sir, Chairman, the reason we put this on the agenda was to get a direction from the board, for this to be an inflation point from the board to decide whether you want to go forward with this project or not. In our conversations previously, it was our intention to, through the health department, to put a primary care provider down there in that facility, probably through the health department with a nurse practitioner, at least three days out of the week, hopefully five days out of the week. And then to put other county services on a daily occasional basis down there, like the veteran service officer may go down one day a week, DSS may be down there one day a week, other services that are provided locally here at the county, so you don't have to come all the way to Washington to be able to receive services. We would look to do that there, maybe on a day or two days a week. But the desire was to have primary care provider there to serve that area when ECU Health pulled out. I will tell you that last week, I was on a conference call with the health director and the COO... and the COO of ECU Health, the president of the community hospitals, and the president of the local hospital here. And I was told in no uncertain terms, they had no intention of going back in that facility, because of their financial status. So, it is upon, i- i- if the board wants to move forward with providing healthcare, um, then this is the first start for that. The health department is moving forward with that. This building was built in nineteen seventy-seven. It has had no substantial, uh, work done to that facility since then. There was a roof put on it ten years ago. Our roofing inspector, REI, has already looked at it. They say it's good for probably another five years and we're gonna put a roof on it. So, essentially what we're asking you, yeah, this is the start of it. But if you want to provide healthcare services to that healthcare desert in Beaufort County, then this is the start of that. And what we need to understand from this board is, is that what you want to do or is it not what you want to do? Because if it's not what you want to do, we're gonna stop and we're gonna put the mark, put the building on the market. Uh, but if it's what you want to do, then I think what I've heard this board say is they wanted healthcare to be provided down there. We've heard from our ECU health providers, they're not going to do it. So we need for you to tell us what you want to do as a board.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, this won't be, this won't take long. Now, this is for the manager. Uh, do we, do we not have that agreement with the health department to have that mobile facility down there?
If, if, we have a mobile, we have a mobile bus with the health department, um, if we were to send that down there, they have nowhere to connect and they have no restrooms. So, um, their intent was not to, was to use the, the, the mobile unit to be able to go to communities, um, but it is, it is the desire of the health department, the health director, to put a provider in that facility at least three days a week, um, and make it a home base so that people know it's there. Uh, when ECU Health pulled out, we got information there were over six hundred patients who lost a provider.
But I do remember us specifically spending county taxpayer money for a mobile unit to go down there.
You, you spent money for a mobile unit to provide services in rural areas of this county and communities. And if this board, if, if four members of this board want to say, "We don't want anything to do with that facility," then we just need to know that. That's just what we need to know.
I don't want to conflate those two issues. Uh, so you're saying that, uh, bathroom might be needed in order to get the, uh, mobile unit down there and, uh, and you, electricity needs to be cut on so they can tap into that. Uh, that, that needs to be done possibly. Runimentary bathroom, didn't that be great? But then a bathroom so that people can go and use it.
So, uh, the...
You only need one these days.
No, in, in, in order, again, i- if you're gonna make, if you're gonna use a medical facility, there has to be sanitary conditions to be able to do medical procedures.
No, I'm talking about, we still can use the mobile unit. You did say that we needed to, in order to use a mobile unit, we need to have a bathroom there and electricity cut off so they could tap into it. That was a condition, maybe.
What I, what I tried to express to the board was that if you were to only use, so let me be clear, if you were to only use the mobile unit, then the mobile unit doesn't have access to a electrical hookup to where it could stay there for any significant part of time. And it doesn't have a facility, there aren't facilities there available for our staff to be able to go to the bathroom. So if you want a, if you want that, then, you know, we either gotta send them over to the, to the ABC store or to the, to the town hall or something like that. But if you're looking to put a primary care provider in that facility, you need to do it in that facility.
Okay. Okay.
This obviously is all the way. This is all, uh, the list you gave us, all the way. What if we just do bare minimum enough to get the services in there to see if the services actually are gonna work and, 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 you know, have more people come in? I mean, is there a minimum? I mean, it's good to hear that the roof doesn't leak, but if we just had fixed a couple of bathrooms and stuff like that, is it possible that we could just do a little bit to see if these services will be popular?
We'll take the board's direction and whatever you'd like for us to do. If, if we're going, if we're going to put medical providers in a facility, that facility needs to be up to code and it needs to be correct. We don't need to try to, in my opinion, and I'm not the policymaker, you guys are the policymakers, um, I'm not comfortable putting our staff in a facility that's, that's not where it needs to be, especially if we're providing healthcare. So, I mean, but, but that's this board's decision on what you want to do. We'll work within whatever you tell us to do.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Booth?
Far, far as I'm concerned, Mr. Manager, I would, I was pursued. I mean, it, it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but you have people on the south side of the river that it take, uh, in some of those places, it take an hour to get over here. And if we had some kind of service to help them, as a matter of fact, one of our largest employers is, uh, on that south side of the river. And I'm sure if we had a, uh, a nurse or a doctor that would come in certain days a week, maybe three, four days a week, I'm sure that they would be very, very appreciative. And three hundred, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. But think about a life. How much is it worth? I wouldn't take three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for not a child I have. And, and those people deserve the same thing that we have over here. I, I firmly believe that.
Commissioner Booth, I appreciate the comments. Um, I, I think the, the, the fact of the matter and why there is so, so much expense on this, I think what you heard, uh, the county engineer say was, "There are Pacific Electric panels in that facility." They don't make those anymore. They have been deemed to be an electrical hazard. I'm surprised the building hadn't burned down. If we're going to use that facility, then we need to bring it up to code and we need to bring it up to the right place. The building was built in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, I, I think if you look around, that's one of the challenges we as a county have in our facilities. We had a facility study done of our existing facilities, and it said that you need to be spending two pennies of your tax rate every year fixing those facilities for the next thirty years. We have a lot of facilities that are not in good shape. This one was built in nineteen seventy-seven, they put a roof on it ten years ago. Vitent Health at the time was the provider. They were simply providing services. They weren't necessarily looking after that facility. If we're going to be in that building, we need to look after it. We need to make it right. We need to have it such that our folks can work there in a safe manner. Uh, if not, we need to walk away from it and get rid of it, sell it, and get it off the books. But, but that is where we look to you to make that policy decision.
Mr. Chairman, unless somebody else got, you're gonna say something? Commissioner Reboz? Oh, you want Reboz? We're used to him.
I think the priority here is to serve the thirty-five hundred residents of Richland Townships, okay? They're, they're the ones that have been left high and dry by ECU Health in this method. I'm not sure that this is the best way to do that. I think we need to talk about it a little bit more to have a better understanding of what other options there are. I knew, I know Agapi is also talking about doing something possibly down there. So, um, and I, I appreciate the fact that you've been able to wrestle with ECU Health and, and get a clear understanding of what they're, that they're just walking away. But, so we, we're, so we're sort of left with two potential providers, that being us and the health department and Agapi. So to me, the next step is to get the two of them together and let's vet them, both of those organizations, as to what, and you know more about ECU, us than, in that regard, but we don't know what Agapi's got, um, and see what it is that we can put together that works for the, works for the residents of Richland Townships. Maybe it is gonna be to renovate that building completely. Maybe that is it, but I'm not sure I'm ready to do that yet.
Mr. Richards? Well, John Reboz came down to where I was gonna come down to and what I'm saying, and that is, we haven't thoroughly investigated our options. And may, and go back to the very beginning here, maybe I was naive in my supporting taking this building back because I thought we were gonna take the building back and we were gonna investigate all of the options, uh, before we made a decision about spending any money on the building. But I, I'm getting, I will go into another area that, that should be of great concern to all of the taxpayers in Beaufort County. Beaufort County, and I own the Board of Health, and they're gonna be mad at me, they're not gonna like me. They don't, I think I'm already kind of on the edge over there. But the, uh, uh, we're, we're drifting more and more into the healthcare business. The, the Beaufort County Board of Health is providing healthcare in competition with local doctors and other providers. And, and they're doing this under the guise of, well, these people can't get it anywhere else and, and, uh, so we have to provide it. That's not true because Agapi is an RPQ, always get the, the, um, the numbers wrong, but what this is, is to tell you exactly how it works. It's a guaranteed, you ain't gonna lose no money in the health business if you do it this way. They're in that business and, and they are very successful in doing what they do. They've got a new facility in Plymouth, they've got a facility, uh, in, uh, Wimston, they got a facility here, uh, so it's not, uh, without thought that they may not, may, they may be willing to provide a facility in Aurora, and we definitely need to talk to them. But I am not gonna vote to put the health department in Aurora because Beaufort County citizens do not need to be providing health services for individuals when we already have plenty of providers now. As a matter of fact, if I vote for anything, it's for the Beaufort County Health Department to get back into public health and get out of providing public health services because that serves the taxpayers of Beaufort County, uh, better and more than anything else. So, I, I think, I think I take John's suggestion. We need to look at this some more before we decide, and we definitely need to talk to Agapi. We need to talk to anybody else that'll talk to us about getting, using, and taking that facility.
My opinion is similar to some of the other commissioners on this board. I think we spent a lot of money to have a mobile unit go down there. Now, we're finding out that it won't work unless we, uh, can use that facility in, in a very limited capacity. We need to use that facility and, uh, that is still, uh, an option, that we can do that for a limited amount of money. But I'm gonna remind all you commissioners, right now is the most expensive it's ever been in America's history to build anything. That's not gonna last but about another year and a half, maybe two years, and things are gonna start evening out. And it's gonna be a lot cheaper to build things. You're gonna find that out, mark my words, it's gonna happen. It's got to happen. We cannot keep going, uh, in the upward cycle we're in right now where people can't afford anything. There'll be a reversal. There always is, there's gonna be one coming up. Now, we own this property. That means we have the facility, we can do whatever we want to, we can investigate as to what extent we want to do now. We don't have to move quickly. We can take our time. And we have these options, we have a mobile unit that could be, use that, what needs to be used to make, uh, within that facility to make it, uh, possible for somebody to be down there for a few days a week, and we'll see how that works. And we can advertise and see if there's any doctors that want to come in and quite possibly set up a, uh, a lease where they can come in and use it and we can provide healthcare. But I remind all of you, it wasn't too long ago, we were in the hospital business, and that didn't work out too well because of, uh, some of the things that happened, keeping up the books and whatnot. Uh, you know, you remember, I used to always ask for the books for about ten years and they wouldn't give it to you because the hospital was a regional authority? Commissioner, Commissioner, please. I, I would remind the us that we were in that business and it was unsuccessful because politics always get involved. Now, we don't need to be in the healthcare business because politics will get involved. It's getting involved right now. You shutting me down. Now, we need, we need none of these things. I lived through that, Hood lived through it, the rest of you commissioners, well, Jerry and I think Ed were on the board, but, uh, that was some testy times and it was some dumb decisions got made. Uh, we don't need to make a quick decision tonight just so that we can show that we're doing something for everybody because everybody's life's worth a billion dollars. I'm done.
Is, is there another commissioner? I, I, I would prefer that we not have a motion because I get the feeling it's not gonna pass. It, it's too important for us to just drop this. I think Commissioner Richardson and, and Commissioner Reboz, I, I think we need to find if Agapi is interested in going in there. It may be that, that they want to build a new building, or they may say, "If the county will go in and update this, we will lease it for ten years or fifteen years." I'm not ready to support this, but I am ready to do whatever it takes to help the community out as it relates to healthcare. I agree with Commissioner Booth. It's our duty to make sure that they have healthcare. You know, when it comes to the health department and we talk about the portable unit, that's, that, all these portable healthcare units, uh, TRAM, ECU Health, the Board of Health, is all mobile and to go anywhere in the county. So, you know, we don't want to zero in and say that was a bad investment and, you know, it's not gonna work down in Aurora. I think, I think that, uh, we need a little bit more time to pursue, to see what Agapi's interest is. I would hate for us to do this and they have a plan in the background. But I, you know, this is definitely cheaper than building a new building.
Happy to move in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Should we advertise this somewhere just, just for the, I, I realize it's probably not going anywhere, but should we advertise this publicly somewhere that we have a, a situation available in Aurora for medical, uh, to provide medical care? I, I would like to see us approach Agapi and have thirty days of conversation to see if we advertise. Before we did the next move? All right. Censor, censor based here and...
I'll have a problem with that.
Is that, okay?
Before we do anything, there's gonna have to be a competitive situation, this kind of money, okay? So, at some point, we are gonna have to advertise. We do realize that, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
But that's okay.
So, Brian, if you will, you and David, maybe pursue a conversation with them just to see what their thoughts are. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a, a break and we will be back in ten to fifteen minutes. Please take a seat. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna start back from our break. The, uh, next item is request for additional funding for the solid waste improvements. Wes?
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. As most of you all are aware, um, we have been in the process now for, I believe, a little bit, right around forty days or so, some solid waste site improvements at the, um, River Road site, currently at Chaco Winnity and the Cherry Run site. As you may or may not know, depending on who you talked to throughout the community, uh, River Road had been closed down for, I believe, approximately four weeks. It is currently open, um, for use while the work is going on at Chaco Winnity. That work is progressing well, and when we wrap up there, we will be moving to Cherry Run, uh, with the hopes and plans of having this completed by the end of the year. Um, we've been very fortunate to have some very nice weather, so hopefully that continues and the contractor can keep moving forward. Um, as a part of this project, um, during the planning and designing of the project, there were many unknowns that we had regarding the extent and the condition of the asphalt that was at each of these sites. We could see some of it, we couldn't see some of it, we didn't know if there was any there. We didn't want to start digging around and then having to fix a bigger problem, um, if we didn't find what we thought we were gonna find. So, part of the, uh, contract was to include scraping and sweeping of all of the hard surfaces and, um, at these sites, and also included a small amount of asphalt patching, um, based on what we were aware of. After performing the scraping and the sweeping at the River Road site, uh, we discovered that there's much more asphalt than we initially expected, and the condition of that asphalt is much worse than we expected. Many areas on that site have less than one inch of surface paving that is crumbling from heavy, um, years of heavy use. I have some pictures I'd like to share with y'all if Brandon can bring up the computer, um, just to show what we found at the River Road site. Uh, and I'm kinda, kinda take it as you're coming into that site, going around the loop and coming back out so you can kind of get a feel for where you are on the map. So this is, uh, Magnolia School Road, this is the entrance. You can see that the entrance is very deteriorated to the extent that the, uh, DOT roadway actually had some deterioration as well, that somebody had done some patching on years ago that was failing as well. This is just another view of that from the opposite side. This is just another view of that from the opposite side, and a little bit more of that. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Stan Paramore with NC DOT and his crew for helping us out. They were able to get out there very quickly and repair the roadway, and they also laid some asphalt as an apron to our site, and put some in some of our larger potholes to help us get through this period of some uncertainty while we're coming for this funding. So as we continue down the driveway, you can just see more areas. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on these pictures, it's pretty self-explanatory, just large potholes that have been filled with rock and gravel over the years, edges of the asphalt worn away. These are, it's hard to see in this picture, you can see a little bit better in another one, but these are like spider veins throughout the asphalt where it's cracked, it's crumbling, it is eventually gonna wear away. Luckily, there's a decent base below this, so it hadn't totally been misplaced, but you can see it's starting to become that way. And that's also another challenge of, when we're patching, when we start cutting out asphalt and tearing it out, these spider veins are gonna continue to just crack off as we keep moving. So this is coming around the backside of the loop, large potholes up there. You can also see it's a very narrow stretch of asphalt beside the cones there, that's a new concrete pad there to the left. So you'll be driving on half asphalt, half gravel there, and continuing on around. So that kinda wraps up the conditions of what we have currently at the site. It's not good, it's a lot, it will be a lot of work to patch that, if we decide to go that route. But what we did is, we talked with the contractor, and actually several contractors, to get some updated quotes on what it would take to do a full repaving of this site. We actually received one proposal from our current contractor, as the low proposal, in the amount of $55,793 to resurface the whole site, which includes a million of the existing asphalt, and asphalt pavement of two to three inches, depending on the location. This map right here displays the affected area that this will take place on. The red would be three inches, and the yellow would be two inches. Three inches was recommended due to the heavy trucks, they're the ones that drive on that section, and they do not go up on the loop, so it would not need to be as thick up there. The River Road site serves an area of higher population within the county, lots of residents there along the River Road area, and the parcel is owned by the county. Therefore, we do expect, even with the changes that we're discussing coming forward, that this site will continue to serve some sort of solid waste purpose going forward. We don't know to what extent, but we do anticipate there will be something there for residents to use for many years coming forward. So resurfacing both the driveway and the loop will provide a longer-lasting solution than patching, and a better experience for the users of the site. If we do not do the full repaving, frequent patching will be needed to continue to address these issues that we have now. Or if we were to replace the surface that's currently paved with rock throughout the site, that will just be continuous maintenance for Republic, they do all of our grading and everything, and that will just be something that never stops. So in addition to the $55,793, we are asking for an additional $42,070 to round that off to $60,000, which may be, may would be needed for any unit price quantity adjustments. This contract does have some unit price aspects to it, and any additional unforeseen circumstances as these projects progress. So we are asking for $60,000 in funding to accomplish this paving at River Road, and any additional needs that may arise as we finish all the projects.
Questions of Wes? Randy?
The $60,000, that's gonna skin everything off, and then put another base back, and then the asphalt.
It will all be one lift, a three-inch lift, in the red area on the map, which Brandon pulled that off.
I see.
And one two-inch lift on the yellow. It won't be a base and then a surface.
Anyone else?
Wes, are you sure this isn't gonna happen at Chalkowinity?
Based on what I've seen at Chalkowinity, the condition is nowhere near this. That asphalt is much more intact. I mean, there is...
Okay.
That is one thing where the additional money comes into, is we have a little bit larger area than what we thought needed to be patched, that can go towards that.
Okay, for this, I make a motion, we do the whole thing, $60,000. Up to $60,000. Okay. And we got a second. Any more discussion?
Only question I have, may I come out of the enterprise fund for solid waste?
Yes, the budget amendments has the account number for the fund balance.
Okay. Okay, if no other comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the preparation of $60,000 up to, please raise your right hand.
Well, thank you for taking the step on this project, and I know the residents that use that site thank you as well.
I think I told you earlier, I went there today, and of course, it's closed on Monday. I had forgot that, but what has been done looks first-class.
It's very nice. Much safer for the users. I understand that, you know, the handrails probably aren't what everybody wants to see, but I would much rather get the complaints of that than have phone calls where somebody has fallen off that retaining wall and gotten injured.
The rumor already is that that's happened.
Oh, it happened?
Well, that we're being sued.
Oh, no. Somebody's fallen.
Hadn't heard that rumor.
Well, we had some comments at the Yatesville site, very similar to what you just mentioned, and they lasted for two or three weeks, and then everybody got used to it, and knew what they were up against, and if they needed to go somewhere else, they went to another site to do whatever they needed to do. But it is much safer.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item is the North Carolina Railroad Company Build Ready Sites Grant. Brad?
Well, thank you, Chairman Waters, and members of the commission, for my opportunity to appear before you, and to discuss a great opportunity we have to improve the marketability of the Chalkowinity industrial site. When I got this job, and I think when we went on our first meetings with Brian, he said, really need to focus on that Chalkowinity site, that presents a tremendous opportunity for Beaufort County, based on the size and the infrastructure that's out there, along as with the location on Highway 17 and Norfolk Southern rail line that's there. So we started to look at what grant opportunities, or what we could do to help market that site, and one of the things that came back was the uncertainty around the due diligence out there, and the location of where that rail spur would go. So then actually, a somewhat new program that the North Carolina Railroad Company has is called their Build Ready Sites Program. I believe this is maybe the second round of funds that have been available through that organization. And that organization really is trying to promote more rail economic development in rural eastern North Carolina, or rural North Carolina, they actually operate all throughout the state. And they realized that for a number of the larger projects that are looking at the state of North Carolina, many of those projects need rail, and they found that there was not a great number of rail-served industrial sites that were ready to go, shovel-ready. And so they established this program, and did a call for applicants, and the selection process is really focused on just tier-one and tier-two communities. Rural nature gets a little more interest. Having everything shovel, all the infrastructure in place gets you additional points. Some of the minimal requirements is that it has to be at least 50-plus contiguous developable acres, and that the infrastructure is, or the site is owned or controlled by a public entity, and we checked all of the boxes for that. The actual application process was a 351-question survey, that we had to provide answers to all of those questions. We also had to submit all of the due diligence that had been done to date, and that's really the site studies that had been done. And if you'll recall, back in 2016, Duke Energy accepted the site into their site readiness program, where they provided a lot of the due diligence that was there, but of course, that now is seven years old. So it was a competitive process. We submitted, they actually came out in January 18th of this year, with a site selection consultant, Sarah White from Global Location Strategies, as well as one of their civil engineers, and then the North Carolina Railroad staff. And we submitted the site, and we felt really good about it, and they did approve us for a grant in the amount of $700,000 for the project total, and that requirement would be, in their program, they would pay for 60% of that project cost, with the county being responsible for 40%. The reason why that site is so good for development, as you can see, it's a very large site, it's over 246 acres. Highway 17 butts the site, as well as the secondary access from Frederick Road. And the key selling point on this site is that it has the Norfolk Southern Rail Site going right down the middle of it. Also, with this site, it has all of the necessary infrastructure that is needed, with a natural gas distribution line running right through the site, as well as electric, water, and sewer provided by Duke Energy, the town of Chalkowinity, and Pitt, and Beaufort County. Another great selling point of this site is its location. This is a map showing you the distance from the two ports that we primarily call on, and that's the Port of Virginia being about two hours, two and a half hours from the site, and almost equidistant is the Port of Wilmington. So especially with transportation and logistics and larger companies, that makes it a prime site. This slide, wanted to tell you a little bit about the project activity that we've had out there. Since I've been in office here at the Beaufort County Economic Development, we've submitted the Chalkowinity site for 24 different projects, and those tend to be rather large scale, as being over 100 acres usually. The average capital expenditure of those projects was $464 million, and the average jobs that would be created by those projects was 484 jobs. So you can tell by the nature, we're not dealing with small potatoes here, this is rather large. Opportunities for economic development would be a very large job producer, as well as increase the tax base of Beaufort County. One of the things we needed to do in order to apply for this program, or at least the next step, was to identify the wetlands and update that, and we've done that with the, our civil engineering firm, Alliance Consulting Engineers, and ECS. They were waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers preliminary determination, determination letter to show exactly where we could build this pad site. The funds would be used for making the site more shovel-ready, so it would be for clearing and grading at least 100,000-square-foot pad site. That would be planned out to allow for the rail spur to access that site, and so it would be, one of the benefits of having a shovel-ready pad site is that the companies already know where the best place to build out there, and they can add on or subtract from that pad site, but they at least have a plan, kind of a master plan, for where that rail would access. So those funds, again, the total project cost was $700,000, with the North Carolina Railroad grant being $420,000, and I'm here before you today to ask for the local match requirement, which would be 40% of the total project cost, at a total of $280,000. I've mentioned the projects that we have submitted the site for, but I just wanted to draw your attention to actually a very recent success for the state of North Carolina. October 26th, just a couple weeks back, Brunswick County announced, in Bolivia, the town, Epsilon Advanced Materials is going to invest $649.9 million to create 500 new jobs, and that's at their Mid-Atlantic Rail Industrial Site. And both NC Railroad is a part of that project with their NC Railroad Invest Program, as well as Alliance Consulting Engineers served as a consultant for that project. So just to give you a recent example of hopefully the type of success that would soon result with this investment, and that's exactly what this is, an investment. I believe the site was acquired in 2008, and so we're really anxious to get that site in active use for a project, as well as the fact that there's some new funds becoming available through the state of North Carolina to develop additional sites. And so we would like to pursue those opportunities, but it would not make a lot of sense right now to do that if we still have this site on our books. And so definitely appreciate any questions you may have, happy to answer.
Questions? We don't have a candidate for the site right now.
We have a number of candidates. We've got, in fact, the 24 active projects, the three that are actively, we call project active projects, being that they have asked for additional information, or actually have come to a visit for the site. Those three projects have happened after we were able to share with them the possibility of this NC Railroad site. And one of the things that we, the North Carolina Railroad folks have told us is that if we get a project before we actually clear and grade this site, we're able to use those funds directly to, as part of an incentive to the company, to cover the costs of their own specific clearing and grading and site development needs.
Well, okay, since you put it that way, I'm gonna have a problem voting for $300,000 of county money, when we don't have somebody that wants to go on the site. But on the other hand, I don't have a problem with offering it to the three, your three hottest candidates as an incentive, and if one of them bites, then I'm willing to spend the $300,000 to get them here. But I'm not willing to spend it based on if you build it, they will come.
And just for clarity, it's what the request is for $280,000.
Other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe you can answer this, maybe the manager can answer this. How many times have we had that property survey for delineation of wetlands?
I believe this is the second time that I'm aware of.
Why are we doing it again? Has it changed?
It does change, actually, and we've had a number of studies done, from phase-one environmental, wetland, topography, endangered, and cultural resources, soils, and so all of those studies, some of those obviously do not change, but some of those do change, and so it's good for us to regularly update those, so that we're able to work with companies and provide some assurance that if they select our site, they're not gonna get any surprises once they start.
I agree with that 100%, but the change, in my experience, is a lot less, is very limited. Although, if it's only good for five years, then it's important to go ahead and get it done. Maybe every six, seven years. I wouldn't do it every five years, but I get that.
Yes, sir.
Have it ready. Thanks, Brad.
John?
Brad, my only question is, where on the map is this proposed pad gonna be?
So in talking to the consultants, we anticipate it being in the large cleared area. I don't know if my cursor will go, but if you see this large clear area, if you look at it as quadrants, in the northeast quadrant of the site.
So that's part of the 163-acre part?
Yes.
Okay.
And what the next steps would be is to engage, or put it out to bid for the clearing and grading, and then to determine exactly where the... and grading, and then to determine exactly where the rail spur would come in and serve that. And we'll be doing all that in conjunction with North Carolina.
Okay. My only question is, then what happens if the company comes in and wants to build in the lower left-hand quadrant, and they want railroad access?
Well, we would certainly want to entertain that as well. We, in the development of this site, we weren't sure, I think originally, that we anticipated maybe multiple companies going out here. And just with the number of projects, the kind of railroad examples we have, they seem to be 100-plus acres, some are 200 acres.
Okay.
And so it could be one user, which would really, you know, locate there. And so it wouldn't necessarily all be where the pad site would be, but if you think about parking lots and lay-down yards, they would build off of that. Where their prime mover on the decision of the site would be where that rail spur would be able to be located.
So, if that company in the bottom-left-hand quadrant wanted rail access, would they have to pay to have another spur come over to them?
Well, the spur, this was, that would be for an additional funding through either North Carolina Railroad, they have a NC Railroad Invest Grant Program for design and construction of the rail spur, and then also Norfolk Southern would help bear those costs, as well as the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Okay, so they're gonna get that for free?
Yes.
If they wanted?
If it's a project that is of a certain amount, and it needs-
Where I'm going here is sort of like, do you spend it before now, or do you wait and then custom-make it to what the need is?
Yeah, so a number of the projects that, when we get them across our desk, they actually ask for a pad site, not all of those. And so the reasons why companies are asking for pad sites now is that it further eliminates any question of where is the optimal place to build, but also it gets them up and running way faster. So speed to market for these companies is very crucial. And so it gives us a leg up to, if you have just a raw field, that you could say, well, we could put it here, we could put it here. We've already done the work and understand what's below the surface and where that rail spur would be. And so if they wanted, say, only 50,000 square foot, that would still be a good investment. If they need 200,000, we at least have 100,000 pad site ready to go.
Yes. Let me back up a minute. Looking at timeframes, is it possible to couch something where we could make the three, your three hot prospects aware, maybe with a time limit, that this is available, if they're willing to make a commitment within a certain amount of time? And I realize companies don't necessarily make things that way, but if you happen to have a company that's somewhere close, it could pay off for all of us. I'm kind of like John. I don't like throwing a dart at a board, and that's what you're doing when you say you're gonna put this pad in a certain place, because nobody knows where the user's gonna want it. And that's why I'm gonna vote against it. If we can't put something together that gives us some, a little bit of leverage, maybe with these companies, to see if we can help them and us too.
So one thing we do, we are in regular contact with the consultants and the companies that have looked, and so we do make them aware of any changes or updates to the site. So we certainly can follow up with them and let them know that the, these grant funds are time-limited. And that's the other point I wanted to make, is the North Carolina Railroad Company has awarded us this grant, but they do want us to accept it within a certain period of time. And they had talked about us doing that before the end of the year. And so they want us to kind of clear their books moving into 2024 and get these funds that have already been earmarked for Beaufort County kind of out the door.
Well, can you make your rounds and come back next month? And let's see what's going on.
I am certainly prepared to do that, and I'll give you guys updates on kind of all of our projects. But I do think there's a kind of a time-sensitive nature of this request.
Randy? Did you? Ed? Jerry? Well, how long have they been waiting for an answer from us?
It's been several months. And part of that has been we've needed to get through the wetland delineation and the Army Corps determination. It's kind of, you know, if we don't have enough land or the optimal area to be able to build 100,000-square-foot pad-ready site, there's no point in moving forward. But that preliminary, and we're in consultation, not just myself, I'm not a civil engineer, but we are working with a civil engineering firm to advise us and to do these studies. And so it is something that we are prepared to move forward, and they've given us all clearance that we would be good on building that pad site.
Any more? Okay. I'll make a motion and we proceed. You got a motion to proceed? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a second. Any other comments? I have some discussion. When you say proceed, you mean go ahead and approve the grant tonight and forget about using it for leverage to try to get a company in here? I can't support something like that, because you're throwing a dart at a board, and that's exactly what you're doing, and you don't know what you're doing when you do that. Putting $300,000 out to get $400,000, and you don't know where you're gonna want to use the $700,000 is not a good business decision.
Yeah, I concur with Hood. If there's a possibility we can get somebody, and it's a few months from now, and they pulled that money back, I've got a feeling they'll put it right back out there if we absolutely need it.
Yeah, we've had these conversations with them, and I guess they have a limited number of funds available annually for this. And so actually, the application period is already open for the next round, and so there may not be funds available. We've already been approved, and so that is my recommendation is to move forward.
It's just that $280,000 is a big match, a lot bigger than what we're used to, and they're probably happy for us to put that much down. And I know it would be wonderful to get somebody. I'm all for it. You're doing a great job, and people are coming to North Carolina. But I'm not looking to spend any money out of budget that unnecessarily needs to be spent right yet. I mean, I've been doing this a long time, and I have seen us build buildings and I get filled, and I think we're close enough. You're talking to three people right now. Bring us up next month, let's see what it looks like.
Did you have a comment, Brian?
Not necessarily, except that the board purchased this property in 2008, spent $1.8 million on it, sat there ever since.
Hey, based on all the consultants and everybody that's looked at it, at the Department of Commerce, I mean, is your professional advice that this is the right thing to do?
It is, and I've had direct conversations with EDPNC, and they're always surprised to learn that we have a site of this size with all the infrastructure, especially on Duke, with Duke having a substation right there, and with Norfolk Southern Rail Line on 17. So I'm frankly surprised it hadn't moved. I think part of it is to, looking at the map, when you submit the preliminary due diligence that we have done, I could see how it would scare off some of the clients, because there's these areas of wetland, possible wetlands. And so if their always decision is to move quickly with minimal risk, they don't want to put the paws for us to be able to do the studies to kind of understand exactly. That's why we've redone this, and that's why that pad site would help move us to the top of the list.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor.
You don't have a current shell building available, do you?
We do not. We do have the Beaufort County Skills Center, which is being leased from BTW Global, and then once they move on to their site in Beaufort County, we'll have that site available. And we have had some preliminary discussions with the Committee of 100. That's been our partner historically for building shell buildings, but also the private sector. We've had some conversations with builders, and as was stated earlier, it's kind of an expensive time to build a building. And so that's been the primary reason why there hasn't been much interest in doing a shell building.
So this would be the only thing you really have to offer?
It would be our best opportunity with, of course, the land we have available, about 45 acres. And so we wouldn't be able to submit any of these large-scale projects for the land that we have in the Beaufort-Washington Industrial Park. Aurora is coming online now, but those are 5, 10-acre industrial. The airport industrial site is about 107 acres currently, and we're just at the start of getting that due diligence done. So this is our kind of best and brightest opportunity for big jobs like what's happening in Bolivia, in Brunswick County.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the NCRR grant contract, and also approve the budget amendment of $280,000 coming from the ARPA generated fund balance, please raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you very much, Brad. Next item is from the Finance Office, surplus funding school facility study. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Always good news when we have some surplus funding. So just to give you a little background information, the county appropriated $25,000 to the schools last year to do a facility use study. The actual cost of the study came in at $17,675, creating that $7,325 surplus. So I'm here tonight to kind of give you the three options that I see that you could do with that money. The option number one would be to have the schools write a check to the county for $7,325, and then that money would go back into our coffers and to the general fund balance. We could allow the schools to keep that $7,325 and spend it on other operational items. Or my recommendation, and the manager's recommendation, is option three, where we have the schools return that money to the county, but we would earmark it for the future IT needs that we know are coming down the road in three or four years. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Randy?
Because we have a school board that's conservative, and honest, and Christian, and brave, I totally trust that they will spend this money wisely. So I make a motion that we give them item number two. That we give them the $7,325 to spend on operational items as they see fit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second.
I didn't even do it, because I knew I was here to make a statement.
Okay. All right, comments, questions? Yeah, I have comments. Take note that both of these gentlemen's wives serve on the school board, so they really don't have any choice but to give the money back to the schools. Ah, yes.
Don't y'all be nothing that this bozo say. I'm throwing it because I feel like I want to do it. My wife don't even know this money's coming up, and if she does, she hasn't said anything to me about it. He's got a serious problem when he can't have his way. And somebody got to teach that boy how to behave.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Oh, yeah, this fails, and I'm not sure if it does. I favor the first option. I like that option. Because I feel like the money is the county's money, and it needs to come back to the county taxpayers. If they can spend the money better than we can, we don't need to be up here. We allocate money, and sometimes I think we allocate way too much money. I think that on a long-term basis, and I think it now. And I think we'd be very wise to bring that money back into the county and not earmark it for anything.
Okay. Anybody else who would call for a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. All right.
I would like to make a motion that we go with option one. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion, second. Any comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, I spent the last 12 weeks, I've had the privilege of participating in the association's leadership class. And one of my modules was on negotiations. And they taught a lot about the mutual gains approach. And so that is when there's a give and take, and you meet in the middle. So we, obviously, tonight, we have one side on this end with option three, we have one side with option one. And as the school being a long-term partner of ours, and recognizing that we're going to be giving them money for capital in four years anyway, I think it's a smart recommendation to say, yes, we'll let you have the money, but you know what? We think you need to earmark it for capital, because we see that expense coming down the road. This board took action last month to set up the reserve. We set aside $253,000 of the surplus sales tax money, so we've started saving money for that capital need that's coming up. And adding this $7,000 will just continue to build that fund for them. So I think option three is a compromise that everybody would probably enjoy and be able to.
That's why I asked for two, because I knew they were gonna vote for it.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that we put the $7,325 into the future school IT needs. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion before we take a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's four years from now, possibly. This board can't obligate future boards with anything.
Actually, with capital, you can. If we set it aside as reserve capital, it will go to the schools for reserve.
I want this board to think of that every time you do reserve capital, that you're obligating future boards, if that is in fact true.
No, we're just-
It isn't true?
It is true.
It is true.
When you said, "in fact, is it true?", it is true. The financial officer wouldn't stand there and tell you a lie.
No, I didn't say, I said, "if it is true."
The money that's in there.
She just said that it was.
Yeah.
Every time we vote to put additional money in there, it's that current board doing that. You're absolutely right. The 253, and if we put this in there, you're absolutely right. I'm impressed.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I'm really impressed.
Usually I'm right.
One of the things I think we should take note, before we take the vote, is it, I'm complimenting the chief financial officer for the school system for offering this money back to us, asking us, and for the county manager saying that was a board decision. It's a small amount of money, but I appreciate the fact that it went through the proper channels. And now it's our opportunity to take a vote. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to Commissioner Richardson, the ankle bracelet program.
Okay, I brought up the issue of ankle bracelets, because it was a program that was being used very little. I felt like this has to do with ankle bracelets for jail prisoners who can be put on ankle bracelets under certain terms and conditions. And since then, I've learned everything I wanted to know about ankle bracelets, I think, from talking with several different people, and they have all pointed me in a direction. At this point, when I brought it out, I was hoping to use it to substitute for some programs that we already had in order to reduce the jail population. But at this point, I think my position on it, without trying to pursue it any further, is that we, if we're not going to use it, we just need to do away with it. But I hope that we use it, and I would encourage those officials who are making the decisions to use it, to use it every opportunity that they get. But it is a little-used program, and there are a lot of things that go along with the ankle bracelet program. A lot of times, things are not what they look like they are. So that's my report on ankle bracelets. We had as few as two people on it, and had them on there for several months, and that's why I brought it up. At the moment, we've got, I don't know, about six people, one, two, three, six people on it at the moment. So it's, you know, viable, but I don't have the same position that I started out with.
Okay, you want to get to the next item, information request from the Register of Deeds?
Well, I think we beat on the Register of Deeds issue here tonight a lot. What the public needs to know is, Chairman Garrus is chairman of the North Carolina, of the Beaufort County Republican Party, and she has been especially vicious toward me in the past. That's what the friction is that you hear people talk about. I'm a conservative Republican. She's apparently not. But my concern in this is that the people of Beaufort County have those records recorded in a form that they cannot be lost, and that they're always available to us. Just because other counties are making bad decisions doesn't mean that Beaufort County has to make them, and I expect to continue with this. There's a lot of circling of wagons and conflating of the issues. It looks like this, but it's really something- It looks like this, but it's really something else. There's no law that gives the register of deeds the unilateral authority to make a decision not to record in hard copy. If you heard John read stuff, John Rebboltz read stuff, she read stuff, this is a permissive laws. They always say "may," and in some cases, they say "with the consulting and the support" or whatever of other officials. And county commissioners are involved in this because it's county commissioners that pay for the recording of deeds and the running of the register of deeds office. She does not have taxing authority, and you need to keep that in mind. Protection of the public and your property rights is very important. If you put it on an electron, and there's a storm, or certain servers go down, you can lose all of that information. And having the deed at home is not going to do you any good at the end of the day because of the way the laws are structured in North Carolina. It's a race to the courthouse, just like Commissioner Deathridge said. So keep that in mind. I'm not going to give up working for the people of Beaufort County.
You want to go to state pay plan adjustments?
No.
Now, we're going to the next...
I'm going to call point order.
Yeah.
What's the point of order?
Point of order is I'm going to speak.
He's got a right to speak.
You're going to sit there and allow it.
That's point of order.
That's point of order.
I would hope that you would say something new this time.
Yeah.
That you've not already said.
I may have added a word.
Okay.
I'm going to keep it short. What I want to say, and this is my policy on this issue, it's an important issue, because some have got to watch after the records, the register of deeds needs to, and we need to as well. It's our job. We pay for it. And it's one of the many things we do, but it's just as important as all the things we do. And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to stick with this. It is imperative to record documents in as many processes as possible, stored in as many locations as feasible. Now, that one sentence sums everything up, and it shows how I feel. Commissioner Richardson has told me he feels the same way. So that clears up all issues.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you. State pay plan adjustments, Commissioner Richardson.
State pay plan adjustments. This is a personnel matter. In Beaufort County, has been handling this very badly, and not well at all. What we sit here about every other meeting, somebody comes in and says, "Oh, we've got a state pay plan adjustment." Part of our employees are under what's called the state pay plan and certain other employment regulations. And those employees, if you want to get them a raise, here's how it works. You change a few words in their job description so it fits somewhere what somebody else is doing that's making more money. Then you bring it to the commissioners, and you say, "Well, guess what? This job classification is changed, so they're entitled to a raise. We've been giving out $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to people every month or two." The policy on this is terrible. Allowing this to happen on the band is just wrong. My position on this is, and I hope the rest of the commissioners will support it, is we should do this when we do the budget, once a year. Then we can look at these various jobs. We have an opportunity during budget sessions to ask questions, because the way it's presented to us right now is a strong arm of, hey, look, you're going to really look like a dummy if you don't vote for this. And it is totally wrong. In fairness to the rest of the employees, that's who I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about that person that some manager thinks should get a raise. I'm concerned about the rest of the employees for the county. It's not fair to them. Not all county employees are on the state pay plan. Not all the employees are eligible to receive that kind of a job description benefit. It's just not fair. So, you know, I'll make a motion if someone wants me to, saying that we take up all state pay plan adjustments during the budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Pardon? Brian, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, several things to unpack there. First of all, there are two departments in county government that are office of state personnel regulated. That's the Department of Social Services and the Health Department. I would take exception to Commissioner Richardson's comments that managers intentionally decide to give people raises by manipulating their job description. That is an absolutely uncharacteristically and a flawed comment.
We disagree.
We disagree on a lot of this, Commissioner Richardson. What I'm telling you is the truth. The folks who are under that plan, if their job description changes because of tasks that they are doing. The state of North Carolina requires that DSS employees work a certain way. The state of North Carolina changes those things. The Health Department is the same way. There's a tremendous amount of funding and programs that come down through the Health Department. As a member of the Board of Health, Commissioner Richardson understands that. There are other members who've been on the Department of Social Services board, so you understand that. There are different programs that come down, and they change those programs, which means those employees sometimes are working outside of their class. There's an obligation on our part to look at that and say, they're not working within their class. We send that to the state personnel office. They look at it, and they say, yes, that's correct, this is where they should be, or no, it's not. The reason it's not in our best interest to say it's only available at budget time, which I think we've brought two, maybe three at the most over the last year on these, back to the board. The reason is, I think there are like four or five people in the entire state of North Carolina who do these things. So we do that for ourselves, for positions that we control. We're able to say, if there's a change in that, we're going to do a reclassification, we're going to study, and we're going to have it available at budget time. DSS and Health may not have that opportunity. When those things occur, they send it to the state. It may take the state six months to get that done. So if that happens, then we're out of compliance, and we're waiting until the whole next year. So it would put a cramp on our folks trying to do the right thing, and I appreciate Commissioner Richardson wanting to do the right thing for our employees. That's what this would continue to allow us to do, is the right thing by our employees.
Well, you have the opportunity to not change the job description. You have an opportunity to reassign some duties. There's tweaking and things to be done with this, and that is called management.
Any other comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thanks for the clarification, Brian. All right, school topics and teaching, Commissioner Richardson.
I'm getting complaints from people at the community college and from people in the school system that some inappropriate things are being discussed in classes. And I know we've had some of this that involves the sexual orientation stuff, and everybody runs around and swears up and down that it's fixed, but then it keeps coming back. But we have teachers, professors in the school system that are talking current modern politics. I don't mind discussing politics of 1840 and the politics of 1920, but when you start getting and talking current political situation, this should not be discussed in the schoolroom. And I'm sending a message right now to both the community college and to the school system that if I find out who you are, I'm going to be making your name public, because we don't need to be discussing politics. There's also the sexual orientation issue. Sex should not be discussed in either place, either for that matter, unless it's over in the nursing school, and in relative to medical treatment. So we have a situation here that I invite the public to call me and complain about.
Okay, we're down to the resolution of acceptance and dedication to the idea of school choice and its evolving success, Commissioner Deathridge.
Okay. As the evening is getting late, I'm going to keep this short. I'm going to sum up school choice in one sentence. School choice, well, excuse me, not school choice, well, it is school choice, but it is North Carolina's version of school choice, which is going to be an evolving issue. They're going to have to pass laws every long session to update it and upscale it, because it can't go forward as it is right now in the perfect sense that it needs to be, or there's no need for it. So it is going to be an evolving issue. And to that extent, this one sentence, "School choice, as it evolves into its best model to serve the public's education needs, this benefit will provide choices outside of the historic construct of supporting the public school monopoly." Okay, now I will go to the resolution. Resolution acceptance of universal school choice and dedicated to its evolution to better serve the public's complete interests. Whereas in 2023, long session of the North Carolina General Assembly, universal school choice was passed into law. And whereas in that same long session, many associative and ancillary bills were passed regarding the more efficient future practice of educating our future generations, whereby these bills signify that the finished product of school choice will be an evolving process. Therefore, let it be resolved that Beaufort County's commissioners are in full acceptance of universal school choice and are dedicated to its evolution to better serve the public's interests in affording the complete educational needs necessary to better benefit the expanding requirements of our people to sustain and the continued viability of this constitutional republic. And I'd like to have this sent to the General Assembly members and all 99 county governments. I do not want to send it to the feds, since the feds probably shouldn't be in all this decision-making process. Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
I would regard it as a motion, and so therefore, it is a motion.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
I bet the General Assembly will breathe a sigh of relief that we have, if this passes, put our stamp on it.
Sure, I hope so. Why wouldn't they?
Well, I believe in choice, but I do not agree with this resolution.
What part do you not agree with?
I think you could stop or dedicate it to its evolution period and strike out everything else, including the fact that you wrote it.
Oh, well, that's the main reason. It's really personal, isn't it, Mr. Chairman?
I would say that I'm expressing my opinion just like you do, Commissioner Richardson.
I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to know how you think.
I mean, I just think that there's a lot of words that don't need to be there. I mean, all you can do is say you support what the General Assembly is doing.
The resolution is about 80 words, maybe 90 words, and it's too much for you.
Yes, it is. It is.
Does that operate under the processes of petty?
It operates under the processes that your words are not necessary. So, okay. All those in favor of Commissioner Deathridge's resolution, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Against school choice.
No.
Yes.
You tried to spin that.
No, no, you are against school choice. Well, then you submit a resolution.
I don't need it. The General Assembly has already done it.
No, they haven't. They're going to need to have input from us. Do you understand the evolutionary process?
The motion has failed. Would you like to continue with the community schools discussion?
I will discuss community schools, although I feel like it's going to fall on deaf ears, because you guys are probably deciding to spend as much money as it's going to take to appease a school board. And I'm thinking it's not a good thing to do. Right now, we found out at the last meeting that there's a certain amount of money that Beaufort County may get, and the school board wants to spend it all in one spot. And we don't even know if it's a proper spot. I haven't seen a site plan yet. We're supposed to obligate the taxpayers of Beaufort County for a new school. Now, the county's part's going to be about $9 million right now. As I know, it could be more, it could be less, but $9 million means it goes to a bond referendum. And we haven't seen a site plan. They're talking about building it on-site, and we don't know if the site's going to work. We have infrastructure in one spot. It would be much more feasible to renovate the school there, make it a community school, and renovate other schools as is needed if that money is available. Now, that's my policy on it. That's going to come up again. I'll probably bring up another resolution on school choice, and you can shoot that one down. It might even be 120 words, and you'll say it's just too many words that you don't understand, but it's probably going to come up again.
All you want is something for your little website. Yeah, that's all you're doing, is you're just trying.
You have such limited knowledge. Your heart is real, and I am in the process of staying with what is real. That is my obligation to my constituents that I was elected to, and you played the good old boy game, slide in. I'm the chairman, working with a center-left coalition. Well, I'm telling you right now, there's another world out there, and school choice is part of it. You're against it, you showed it, you voted against it, so did you, John Rebboltz.
This has nothing to do with anything.
Well, let me have my terms. Not for you Democratic socialists, but for us, it has a lot to do with everything.
Okay.
My turn. All right, look, here's what the real issue is. The school board has already admitted, they want to build a building, and they want for 1,100 students, and they want to shut down John Cotton-Taylor and other schools. They want to put 1,100 up to the third or fourth grade. In other words, from five- to nine-year-old children, 1,100 of them in one building. I can't think of anything that will terrify small children any quicker than putting them into a situation like that. Consolidated schools, the consolidated system does not work. It has not worked. It is not working in Beaufort County. We've got like seven or eight schools that have D grades. They have D grades only because that's about as low as you can go on the scale. It's like something like a grade point of 55 or something. We have one school that's doing very well. It's got an A rating, and that's the college school, the community college, the high school out there. What I would like to see us do is take a look at neighborhood schools, community schools. If parents knew that their child was going to be, like in the old days, which I've been accused of being old, and I must be stupid because I'm old, but in the old days, if your parents knew that their child was going to stay in schools until the eighth grade, you had a community elementary school. Look at the most successful one in Beaufort County. It's at Bath, and it's working. If they knew that, we would not be busing children all over the county. There are children in this county that get on a bus at 6:00 in the morning and get off at 6:00 at night. This is something that should not be, and it should not happen. Rather than allowing the school board to waste that $50 million on some new building and crowd all those children in there to continue their failing system, we need to take a look at neighborhood schools and how we can do neighborhood schools. The buildings that we have now are only 50% full. They're only 50% full, and we have a declining school population. A lot of people are taking their kids out of school to train them themselves or in other places so they can get an education. The school system, the complaints that I get from the school system go like this, "Oh, we don't require them to memorize multiplication tables anymore." Duh. And you go make change from some of these people, and they can't make change. We've got a bad situation, and we need to take a look at it. We do not need to allow the Beaufort County school system to spend $50 million on another failed Albatross and call it education.
Okay, thanks for your kind...
Mr. Chairman, are you going to run for school board?
Okay, get out of your business. Okay.
I just wait to see.
We got a closed session coming up. Brian, Katie, whichever one of you wants to read us into the closed session.
The closed session is requested under NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. The closed session will also include a personnel matter, which is covered under NCGS 14331811A6.
Okay, need a motion to go into the closed session.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
We better go.
This time, I need a motion to come back into session. Second. And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our successor, Lloyd.
So the request in front of you is to take the two personal property appraisal specialist positions, we're going to move them into personal property appraisers positions, we're going to up those. We're then going to take the land records data specialists, and it will become a land it will become a land records specialist, which is the mapper position. And we're also the personal property manager, and I did there is a created new position, the assistant assessor, which had previously been on the books for that position, and we're going to do away with one other position, which is a personal property appraiser position. And that's the request.
You've heard the recommendation from Lloyd. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Out of second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, all right. Entertaining a motion to close.
So we gotta go through your comments from commissioners.
I I forgot, I I thought we've had all the comments tonight we need.
It's an agenda item.
Yeah?
I don't have any comments.
You don't have any comments?
You have to go through the you have to call the items from agenda item.
Okay, all right. Got a motion to adjourn. You feel better? You feel better?